Wow, welcome to the Waterloo City Council meeting on January 18th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
I see him.
There we go, okay. Mr. Charles?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Foyce?
Here.
All right, please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, our pledge this evening will be led by at-large councilperson Dave Bozen.
Thank you, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of America, and to a republic which is safe and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion for the agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Greider.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, oh no, well, do we do that now? Okay. And that is to remove item 1B6 from consideration for the consent agenda, as well as approval of the minutes of January 3rd, 2022, regular session as proposed, the minutes of the January 3rd, 2022, special session as proposed, minutes of the January 10th, 2022, special session as proposed, and the minutes of the January 11th, 2022, special session as proposed.
Second. All right, motion has been made, but the second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, first up this evening, we have a proclamation declaring the national observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday on Monday, January 17th, 2022, and I believe we have a video for this.
City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. changed our nation forever through his leadership service and clarity of vision, on the Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday, we honor the lasting legacy of this great American, remember the ideals for which he fought, and recommit ourselves to ensuring that our country's promise extends to all Americans across this great land. And whereas Dr. King devoted his life to strengthening the content of the American character, and called on our nation to live up to its founding principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all its citizens. And whereas Dr. King's faith gave him the courage to confront discrimination and segregation, and he preached that all the powers of evil are ultimately no match for even one individual armed with eternal truths. Through his determination, spirit, and resolve, Dr. King helped lift souls and lead one of the greatest movements in the history for equality and freedom. And whereas our nation has made progress towards realizing Dr. King's dream, yet the work to achieve, liberty and justice for all, is never-ending, and we must continue to protect the rights won through the sacrifice of Dr. King and other civil rights leaders. Our nation must never rest until equality is real, opportunity is universal, and all citizens are empowered to realize their dreams. And whereas, as we observe Dr. King's birthday, I encourage all to celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Let us live out Dr. King's teaching as we continue to work for the day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby call upon all citizens of Waterloo to join in the national observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday on Monday, January 17th, 2022, and encourage all to observe the day with appropriate civic community and service programs and activities in honor of his life and legacy. In testimony whereof, I hereunto subscribe my name and cause the seal of the city of Waterloo to be affixed this 18th day of January 2022.
Okay. Chris, do we, do we have Latonya Graves that you see? I know that she moved back down there. You don't see her. Okay, okay, all right, yep, so we'll do that. Okay, all right, now is the time for oral presentations. We do have one speaker who has signed in, is that correct, Ms. Volkley? Okay. All right, Supervisor Chaka, you are recognized.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to let the city know how much we appreciate your cruel mitigation efforts. Blackhawk County comprises about four blocks in the downtown area, and they have made quite a mess, if you have noticed. So we appreciate the city approaching us for some involvement in these mitigation efforts, and we look forward to future partnerships with the City of Waterloo.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, anybody out in the audience that would like to come up and make a comment, please state your name and address for the record, and you will get three minutes. Thank you.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. First off, I'd like to have number five removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. And I note in the paper, the city staff will receive a raise. I also note I received a raise in my social security. Great. So I figured out by the time the federal insurance increase is deducted, based on a 40-hour, 160-hour work month, I will receive 59 cents an hour increase. Just wanted to point this out, as I, a lot of us who are paying the higher taxes/fees and wage increases living in Waterloo, wish more people that receive these increased city benefits would also live in Waterloo. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Dreyer, were you asking to have 1A5, the award of bid with lodge construction, or?
1A5.
1A5, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to speak briefly about the Edison School rezone request that was before the zoning board this past week. I assume that most of you councilpeople didn't get to see that because it was on at the same time as the special council meeting you folks had. I know I couldn't attend both at one time, but you folks can do things I can't do. Number one, this school rezone is in one of the wettest areas in the City of Waterloo. This is the only area in the City of Waterloo that has been required to put sump pumps in our basement, and then it gets pumped out the window. The engineering staff here at the City of Waterloo said we were not going to put in holding ponds, we were not going to add storm sewers, we were going to just let it run off and run into the existing streets that we have today. I do not think that's the way to do, since we were required to put in sump pumps in every other house. So I don't know where this water is going to go that runs in those basements in those new homes. They don't have a storm sewer to put it in, they're not going to put in a storm sewer. They're going to have houses facing the center of that lot with no street in front of them, only an alley behind them, and it has no storm sewer. So those lots on the west side will not have any stormwater, anyplace. All of this gets paved with roofs, concrete lots, driveways, and it's going to dump more water out in the street and further problem the water we already have in this area. Again, this is the hot spot, the wet spot. It has been for years. It's much better since they forced us to put in sump pumps in our houses. I think there's a lot of things to be addressed, and I think all of you need to get involved. We don't need to make another flood area out of the Edison School project. Thank you, folks.
Good evening, Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. Not so long ago, we used to have council meetings every week, and then they got changed to every other week. And we had a special session on Monday for something that was on the agenda for tonight, and decided to bifurcate that tabled resolution into a special session. And we had three people that showed up at that meeting Monday. It was argued that the proper notification had been given, and people had the chance to come and show up, and the fact that some people had called their council members indicated that people knew about it. I would like to point out the faulty logic in that because the people that didn't know about the meeting couldn't call their council members. Of course, the only people that could call were the people that did know about it. I learned about it on Monday afternoon. I would just, I would like to propose the idea for discussion at a future point, that we go back to weekly council meetings. So everybody knows when the council meetings are being held, and we don't have any sort of rumblings amongst the people that something is trying to be pushed in without proper notice to all the people. Certainly, legal proper notice was given, I'm not arguing that it wasn't, but there was still this impression that something was being done outside of the ordinary after the public had been told this would be done in two weeks. During that meeting, and all three people spoke at this podium, and they spoke to the content and the issues of the project and of the special meeting being called, and council members said that people were using innuendo and making personal remarks. I didn't hear any of that from the podium. I would like to point out that innuendo is not illegal, it's not proper, though, I agree. And just by the same token, I don't think it was proper to have a special session for that one item. It certainly could have been held tonight. I don't see anything that was gained by it, by doing so. One more comment that took place, then it was noted that we can't trust everything on the internet. I didn't recall any speaker at this podium that was citing the internet. Not everything's true on the internet, but I will say this, that some things are true, and I use the internet to look up the Iowa code from the state of Iowa, and I do believe that that's accurate, and I don't have to lug around giant books to reference it. And I would just kind of throw out, suggest that that is a resource that the city council can be using in upcoming discussion this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Obadall. Any further citizens? Council?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
So I'd just like to ask indulgence, because this will probably take just a little bit over three minutes, just so we're all aware. So, two things. On December 28th, 2021, an act of alleged vandalism took place at the Al-Nor Islamic Center here in Waterloo. The alleged perpetrator of these acts wrote several disturbing messages about Islam while also marking what appeared to be the Christian cross as an addition to this anti-Muslim vandalism. This act deeply saddens me because as the teacher, the neighbor, and the friend of many Muslims in our community, I know that anti-Islamic rhetoric has been all too common in the last several years. And as a Christian, I am heartbroken that the cross, a symbol of God's eternal love and forgiveness for all of our sin, was used as part of this alleged vandalism. In the Gospel of Matthew, the 22nd chapter, we as Christians are called to love our neighbors as ourselves. This builds off the Old Testament teachings in the Book of Leviticus to love our neighbors because we are in a community. This sentiment is echoed in the third Abrahamic faith, Islam. According to the Quran, Muslims are called to do good to parents, kinfolk, orphans, the needy, neighbors who are near, neighbors who are strangers, and the Wayfarer. My heart breaks for our community and those too often vilified and demonized because of their faith. But I am heartened by their response, none of anger, but of grace. The Imam of the Islamic Center invited the person into their community to learn, to understand, and to love their neighbor regardless of faith. And that is an example I believe that we could all use more of. I was also struck by another tragedy. A young man was shot and killed on Saturday, January 8th. His death joins four others last year, as well as other shootings in our community. These folks who have been hurt, our brothers and sisters, uncles and aunts, fathers and mothers, sons and daughters, and their deaths, unfortunately, overwhelmingly the deaths of young African-Americans, particularly men, represent a fatal problem in our system. We can all agree that no person in our community should die of gun violence, but that is happening, and something must be done. Now, there are some who will call for simple solutions to this issue. At best, those are naive; at worst, they are designed to be used for their own purposes. The paths that led to the end of each of these lives is not simple, nor is it straight. And there are systemic failures that led to these people losing their lives. Poverty, lack of opportunities, systemic racism, and other problems end with a gun being fired and a person losing their life. And we know that these issues are systemic because no child dreams of dying due to gun violence, no parent chooses to bury their children, no futures are ever built to end this way. This is a failure of many systems, including a failure of this city government to address this issue. And so I would like to propose the beginning of a solution. Tonight, I am calling for a task force made up of community members, educators, religious figures, law enforcement personnel, and other people with specialized knowledge on violence in our community. Their task shall be to be charged with coming together and presenting to this council in the future solutions to this problem. Some of them will be small and short-term, some of them will be long and systemic, but they will all be aimed at the pernicious heart of despair that stalks our community. There are no simple solutions, but by asking the best minds and hearts of our community for their input, we can begin laying the foundations for a better future for all who live in Waterloo, regardless of where they live in our community. In upcoming council sessions, I shall introduce a resolution more fully outlining this task force, its membership, and its duration. I would ask anyone who cares deeply for this community and about this issue to reach out at any time. I have walked the streets of our community on the east side and the west side calling for peace, and now it is time that I lend my voice to lifting up policies that will make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greider.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of retired firefighter Lou Ball, who died a week ago last Friday. He was instrumental in our Fire Pals program in our local schools, and I'd like to keep his wife and family in our thoughts and prayers. And he does have a brother that works for the city, Bob Ball, and his niece works for the police department, Kim Wybery, so keep them. Secondly, I wanted to express my gratitude to Public Works for the work they've done with the snow removal. It was really refreshing to get emails and comments from people thanking, and wanting that gratitude to be expressed. It wasn't just, they weren't just talking about the street department, they were also talking about leisure services and what they're doing with the parks, parking lots, so that people can enjoy the winter and have places to park off the street, as well as grooming the cross-country skiing routes through our golf courses and that. So I wanted to do a shout-out to them. It was really nice to have public input, positive public input. And then, if Mr. Bennett's on or someone from the Public Works, I'm just curious, and I noticed driving downtown today that we still have large piles that it's accumulating in the parking, because that was part of our, with, our working with Main Street to get that parking cleared out sooner, and I was just wondering if you could give us a timeframe on when those piles would be removed? And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, I'm Bennett, Hala Works Division Manager. So we finished going through the residential today, and actually tomorrow is when we plan on start working on removing the piles downtown. And the goal is to hopefully have them removed by the end of the week.
Thank you.
All right, and I know that Paul and Randy will also share their, you know, your positiveness of the things that are going on in our city as well, so with their staffs. So, any other council? No?
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Amos.
Yes, I just want to, word is, reiterate what Councilman Greider is saying. I fully support what he is attempting to do, and I will lend myself to whatever is necessary to bring his endeavor forward.
Thanks, sir. All right. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing, public comments, and to receive and place on file.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I'm, make a motion to receive and file the consent agenda with the items 1A5 and item 1B6 to be removed, and the bills payment for January 10th for $17,245,317.01, and January 18th for $4,034,922.30, and move and receive and approve and place on file.
Second.
Questions?
Second.
And this is just a voice vote, correct? Roll call, sorry. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. May I have somebody take 1A5, please?
Mr. Protem.
Mr. Bozen.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Lodge Construction, Inc. of Clarksville, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $1,281,571.05, and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with FY 2021 Cedar River Marina and Recreational Enhancements DOT Project Number TAP-U-8155, parentheses, 768, parentheses, dash, dash, 8I-07, contract number 1011, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Public comment?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I spent some time trying to find a number of boats registered in the state/Blackhawk County. Guess I'm too computer illiterate because I came up empty-handed. I know a boat, boater, I'm not a boater, but have heard stories about how many boats were and are registered in the county, and how many use, used to use the Cedar River, including the Waterhawks. Some time ago, the city fathers, looking for revenue, decided the sand that was being dredged from the Cedar River was theirs, and decided to charge the dredger for their sand. When they, when this was refused and the dredger removed from the river, we now see the results. Those with a craft that drafts with too much water can no longer use the Cedar River. So they spend their money elsewhere. What is the project, what is the projected revenue from the kayak and canoe marina that are pretty much all that now can use the Cedar? I also read something about, yeah, I write too bad, what's available at the marina, and that there's going to be fuel available there. Cocks and canoes don't use fuel. For what watercraft? So I guess, I know it's going to pass because it's been mandated by a previous contract, but one of the things that you need to think about in the future is to dredge the river so we bring that revenue back. It's been talked about since I've been in this town, 2009, and nobody's done any research on what can be done to clean that river out, so we bring that revenue back to Waterloo. Also, Mayor Protem, I think you said something about A6 is removed, but it's actually B6. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mayor Protem, I just had a question on this one, and whether it's Noel or Jamie. I just want to assure the public that, I know AECOM's been working on this for quite some time, that the Army Corps of Engineers is 100% approval of this project. I know there, there's some pretty strict regulations about penetrating the dike or even disturbing that dike in any way. So if we could just get a little overview on how they're going, if it's, everything's been passed, the Army Corps as far as is putting the ramps along the dikes to get down there, and how we're going to get electricity and fuel to the boat slips and that area down there.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, Noel, let you fight over this one. Jamie, okay.
All right, I'll go first, and Noel can add in if I forget something. Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. Yes, the plans have been approved by the Corps of Engineers. We are not actually through the levee, we are going to go down along the side of the levee. For those of you that have been over between Mullen and First and taken that sidewalk trail that goes down to behind the Center for the Arts and then over to the amphitheater, that's what we're going to be doing. It's going to be coming down the side of the trail, or the side of the levee with a 10-foot wide trail through there. I'm not sure where folks are hearing about gasoline and things like that. To my knowledge, there is nothing in this set of plans to provide fuel, fueling of any sort down there. Maybe that's longer term, but I have not heard anything about that. As far as electricity, there is not electricity down there either. The electricity that we're running is for some of the lights up on top, in the enhanced area and for the parking lot, but nothing down into, or along the, or along the river down there. We are putting in kayak slips and a small area for motorized craft that could tie up there as well, but there is no, no penetration of the levee, and there is no, no fuel that's going to be part of this contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knutson.
I just had a follow-up in it, that since we're not bringing any electric down there, that, that path down to the kayak and canoe and boat slips is, will not be lit at night as far as boats. not be lit at night, as far as boats docking there and going up to that marina area.
No.
Okay.
No, they will not be down there directly next to it, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council questions? Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Whoa. Right, I apologize, roll call, forgot.
It's okay.
Jumped ahead.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number 27 with Cardinal Construction, Inc. of Waterloo, for a net increase of $6,388 in conjunction with the Five-Salem Brothers Convention Center addition and renovation project, and authoring the mayor, authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Public comments? Mr. Bozen?
Thank you, sir. I asked to have this pulled off, just because I had sent some questions to Mr. Anderson, and he hasn't been able to get back to me yet. And if Mr. Anderson is on, then maybe he could expand on it. I was curious, on these six duct detectors, and they're kind of expensive, they're over $1,000 each to install. If this was something that was missed in the original plans, is this something that we changed and added more duct work in that would require the addition of the duct detectors? If you could just expand and, and give us an update on this.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, thanks for the question. Yeah, and I apologize, Greg's not here today, we were talking about this, to kind of go over the details of it. It was discovered that there was never duct detectors installed in some of the existing ducts as the upgrades were made, so part of it is, there was, there was not the duct detectors in some of the older ones that was discovered, that are probably about 40 years old, and then as we made some changes to some of the air handlers, it became apparent that we should upgrade some of them in some of the others. So, it's kind of a mix of both, that, of something we need to do, where we, we needed to upgrade some, and then some of them weren't, weren't there when they should have been.
So, if I could, if I could.
No, please continue.
If, if they were missed in, in the original design, as, as far as some that you said were, are, aren't there where they should have been, is this something that should be a shared expense with the architects and the city?
I think from the original discussions of costs, where they came down in some of the costs, that they are absorbing some of that, I believe, in, in the overall costs that we're looking at now, just to kind of, just to kind of take that into consideration. But it was more of a, you know, some of it, they, they were assumed to be there, because it is over the 2,000 CFM that they're required by code, but they weren't there, so that, I think they assumed some of them were in there, and then once we got into the duct system, further with construction, they found out that they weren't there.
So, did you just say there is going to be some cost sharing, or is this something we're going to absorb the entire amount?
The, we're, we're looking to pay the amount that's on the agenda. I believe it started out higher, and then as we discussed it, some of the costs came down, again, the contractor realizing, hey, maybe, or the designer actually would have been realizing, hey, maybe we should have done a little bit more work to find out if they're there.
So, are you saying that this would have, six duct detectors would have cost in excess of $6,300 bucks?
Yes, it would have, it would have been a little bit higher.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Other counsel? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And before we, we move on, we have several appointments, and for, we have Don Ticknor and Terry Sheffert for the Memorial Hall Commission, Greg Holdeman for the Board of Adjustment, Cody Leistakow for the Community, Community Development Board, Eric Do Not for the ADA Compliance Commission, those are reappointments, except for Craig, and then we have Catherine Mahoney, Michael Allen, Lisa Munoz, and Sam Blatt, all new appointments to our Human Rights Commission, and I know several of them are on here this evening. So, thank you for your service to Waterloo, and, so we'll do that. We'll clap for them, thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Are you on the, what's that?
Okay.
Okay, okay. Didn't know if you wanted to stand up, that's all. And then we have.
Well, you may see this.
I'm sorry, it's my, it's my first official meeting, and I forget to ask questions and do the audience portion, but we also have the appointment of Lexi Blank from the Civil Service List, who will be joining us tomorrow, it looks like, as Planner One in the Planning and Zoning Department. So, thank you, Lexi, for being a part of our city. Thanks. All right, can I have somebody take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a request by Gray Transportation for the Site Plan Amendment to the MP2, M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the expansion of the site at 2459 GT Drive with the additional 116-foot by 80-foot truck maintenance facility.
Second.
Excuse me? Okay.
You rescheduled.
Yep, we got you, Mr. Amos.
The public hearing is canceled, and reschedule at a later date.
Okay. All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay. Mr. Greider, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the sale and conveyance of a portion of a city-owned lot located northerly of 1217 Sycamore Street to Lola Montgomery in the amount of 550, sorry, $549 and 12 cents plus closing costs.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry.
Isn't a public hearing?
Oh, sorry. Public comment, sorry. No, that's okay. All right. Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Greider.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. All right, we have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of a portion of city-owned property to Lola Montgomery in the amount of $549 and 12 cents plus closing cost for property located northerly of 1217 Sycamore Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, any questions?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, can I have somebody take number four of resolutions, please?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Bozen?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving amendment number six to the development agreement with Central Property Holdings LLC, originally executed August 17, 2017, to raise the minimum assessed value from 2.5 million to 4 million, and eliminate the mortgage on the property for all-in groceries project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Spockley?
So, this is the item that was tabled from the meeting on January 3rd, and that we had a, so in the interim between January 3rd and today, we held a special session. Counsel voted at that special session to approve a contract that is actually different from this contract, but since this particular contract was voted on to be tabled to this particular date, and a new contract instead has been approved, we actually need to either vote down or table this contract indefinitely, because we have, the appropriate contract has already been approved by counsel.
Which would you prefer?
It is up to the counsel. Both have a similar effect.
Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to postpone this amendment, or, sorry, this resolution indefinitely. Okay. Public, you'd like to come up and speak on this?
David Dyer, 3145 West Forest Street. From hearing what Mr. Bozen said, I have to agree with that, but I do have a couple comments. Understand the grocery store will pay $144,000 in taxes, but then it also says that's before tax rebates. So, what's the city's net dollar? I see in the paper, we still retain a lien on the property, so I'm not understanding the wording. Releasing a mortgage, to my single-minded thought, would mean we would no longer have a, any tie to the property in any form. Please clarify this better for those of us in the cheap seats. When all of, when the all-in grocery was proposed in August of 2017, I don't recall hearing of any hiccups. Since then, there have been many exposed, some of which has been the pandemic, which started in early 19. So, I guess I would have to understand more about what happened between August 2017 and early 2019, to get more info on the site, side of the developer that I already am. As I stated last meeting, lack of more progress than present causes concern. Progress will begin to calm those concerns. I'm hoping to see that progress soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer.
Forest, Illinois, 1725 Huntington Road. I too have a real problem with forgiving or taking away our right to this property. I've had some people call me. One of them said, well, we have the first lien on this property. If the building is built, will we have the first lien, or will the builder have the first lien? And will the city then assume a lesser lien, like second or third or fourth? They also wanted to know, can this developer sell this property? Once it's built, can he turn around and sell it? Should it turn to not look positive for him, can he sell it? And if it's sold and lost, does the city give up what they've got invested in it, or what happens? If we're not the first lien holder, we probably will not get our money back. That's some of the questions I was asked. A concern I have is this developer built a home in Bremer County. It is assessed at $615,000 at the same time he was trying to get financing to build this grocery store. I would assume that when you're building a house for $600,000, that goes into the mix when you're trying to get a loan to build a grocery store. I know it would at the banks I bank at. And I just don't think we can afford to give up a mortgage, if we don't, if you could explain for these folks that called me about a first and second mortgage, and can the developer sell the property, and if so, at what point in time? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jevon. Noel, we, I know we may have covered some of these questions in the special session, and can you help clear up any further misconceptions that might be out there on what the city is getting, has received? And we, we're not eliminating the mortgage, I think that was the whole point of the special session, but can you help clear up some of this, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, and so the original development agreement had wording in there for subordination of the mortgage. That's pretty standard, when you imagine that the city is putting in, you know, $400,000 toward the purchase of the CVS lot, and a bank is putting in, you know, $8 million for the construction, so it's pretty common for the subordination of the, of the lesser amounts of, of funding. So, that was in the original development agreement, so that's why there was no action required on that, to move ahead with the project. In terms of the other question of selling the property, so the development agreement also has reversionary language, we've discussed before, about how the project must commence, or the city still has reversionary rights. So, again, unlike, we have a little bit more power than a bank does, that has the mortgage lien, the development agreement has several reversionary rights and actions in there if the project does not proceed. One of those will state that the developer cannot sell the land, cannot sell the lot, unless the project is fully built, as described in the development agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Obadell?
Thank you, Councilmember Forrest. I have copies of, of a letter that was discussed last week. I submitted one down at the office to be entered into public record. I would like to distribute these to the council members that are here today.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dot Obadell, 124 Amity Drive. Last, at the last meeting that we had, the special session, session meeting, I made reference to some correspondence that had taken place a couple of years ago, it was after 2018, where I had questions about the, the project reimbursing the city for the expenses that the city was given, and reference was made that these, from, from Mr. Anderson, that my questions were answered in, in a letter, and this is the letter in response that Mr. Anderson gave to me, and there's still some questions that I have, and I would, I would hope that the, my, my council members could answer these questions for me. These are questions of legality. They aren't questions of personality, they aren't questions of, you know, of form and properness, these are questions of legality. And in Mr., and I'll stick to what Mr. Anderson wrote to me here, he notes that the CVS lot was acquired by Central Property with a $400,000 grant assist with the city. That's $400,000 that came from the city. We also gave an additional $500,000 to the developer, following an initial $700,000 that was given back in August of 2017. We were also told last, at the last meeting, that $114,000 would be the amount that a $4 million assessment would generate per the city, for the city per year, at full tax value. But there's an 80% tax abatement, so that, we're going to get about $115,000 over four years, and that four-year spot is very important. I, I used, I used the, the length of term five years on, on Monday, we could go Monday. In this letter, Mr. Anderson references Section 403.81 of the Iowa Code, but when I made my original correspondence, I, I cited 40383, and it is black and white here, that says, that the requirement of real property, of an interest in real property, transferred or retained for the purpose of development or redevelopment, be sold, leased, or otherwise transferred or retained at not less than its fair market value, does not apply if the developer enters into a written assessment agreement with the municipality pursuant to 4036. That is something that happened. The actual value contained in the assessment agreement would indicate that there will be sufficient taxable valuations to permit the collection of incremental taxes as provided in subsection 240319, to cause the indebtedness and other costs incurred by the municipality with respect to the property or interest transferred or retained to be repayable as to principle within four tax years following the commencement of full operation of this development. In this current structure, we aren't getting enough to pay even one of these expenditures by the city. We're not getting enough for the $400,000, we're getting $115,000. In order to make this, make this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Obadell, your time is up.
In order to make this happen.
Thank you, sir.
We would have to have an assessment of $10 million.
Thank you, I gave you, I gave you extra time. Please sit down.
Without any abatements.
Thank you.
I was, I burned 20 seconds distributing the things to that.
The rules do not allow for.
And Mr. Obadell, and, 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 Mr. Obadell, Mr. Obadell, I gave you an extra 20 seconds to do that. So, thank you for your time.
Before voting on it.
Please have a seat.
This is a matter of legality, sir.
Mr. Obadell, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Bozen?
Just, just, just to clarify, and maybe Noel can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but if it has $140,000 tax burden at $4 million, and we have an 80% tax abatement for 10 years, we're going to recoup 20%, which is $28,000 a year. But that's not what the city receives, because we receive a fraction of that. So, I think we're going to be in the neighborhood for those first 10 years at about, a little over between $14,000 and $15,000 taxes that the city's going to bring in, because the rest of it goes to county, schools, and everybody else. Maybe Michelle can correct me, but is it 44.6 what the city receives?
Noel, do you know?
Because I just want to make sure my math is correct.
Is that this isn't an urban renewal area? So, the taxes all stay within the urban renewal area until we have exhausted the expenditures for that area. If this were not in an urban renewal area, first of all, we wouldn't even be able to be doing a lot of this work, because it's the urban renewal law that allows it, but if it weren't, then you're correct that the city would get. But if it weren't, then you're correct that the city would get about 44% of the taxes is all.
So the city's going to get the full $28,000?
Correct.
Okay, and so the schools get zero.
That's correct.
Black Hawk County gets a zero.
Because that's what they would have gotten before. So that's the thing, I think, to remember with TIF projects, is if there was no development, everybody gets the taxes that were there before. If it was plain ground or something else, that's all they get. So the only time that there's increment that the city keeps in the urban renewal area to use is if we're generating new increment by having a new building. And I believe, as I understand it from classes I've taken, the thought process is, that's why the city can keep it, is because they are using the funds to create additional increment that will eventually benefit all the tax-paying parties. That's the concept, anyway.
Quickly, just, so when would schools and county start receiving money from this project? Ever? Since this is a, this is a never-ending TIF?
The never-ending TIF really isn't the purpose. We can withdraw funds.
You can release.
When we wish to. The determination of that is about what other projects need to happen in the urban renewal area. And I believe that the schools and the county and the city all benefit regardless of whether those direct tax dollars are paid, because there is more, there are more jobs, more retail activity, hopefully more families working here, providing students to the schools, all those, we hope to have all those things happening by development.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we are on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Roll call, please.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right, can I have somebody take five, six, and seven, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution approving a two-year reopen collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI Local 1195 Planners and Engineers, AFSMI Local 1195 Police Lieutenants and Code Enforcement Officers, Teamsters Local 238 Municipal Employees Local Union Number 177, Communication Workers of America, Waterloo Police Protective Association and International Association of Firefighters Local Number 66, and authorize the mayor and human resource director to execute said document. Number six is a resolution approving the bond and disclosure council engagement agreement with Aylers and Cooney PC in connection with the issuance of bonds and ongoing continuing disclosure requirements. And seven is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Amy Wyman, Real Estate of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with the sale of 235 Newell Street in an amount not to exceed $10,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Public comments for five, six, and seven. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Bozen?
I would like to thank Mr. Dunn and the HR Department for getting this before counsel so that we could approve these contracts. And I would also like to request that when these contracts are finalized and the booklets are ready for distribution, that all seven of us would get a copy of those contracts.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion for five, six, and seven. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, eight, nine, and 10, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Nichols?
There you go.
I looked up this time.
I'd like to make a motion approving a resolution, a current resolution approving supplemental agreement number two to a professional services agreement with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed May 20, 2019, in an amount not to exceed $175,000 in, you know, cents for construction-related services in conjunction with fiscal year 2021, Cedar River Marina, and recreational service enhancement, enhancements, contract number 1011, DOT project number TAP-U-8155, parentheses 768, parentheses dash dash eight I, dash zero seven, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number nine, resolution approving an incentive payment to Grow Cedar Valley in the amount of $10,000.0 cents for work towards economic development in fiscal year 2022. And number 10, resolution approving a two-year lease agreement with Ruby Abibi for the lecture lease, 50 feet of lot three in the northeast industrial park in the amount of $100.0 cents per year to place small greenhouse structures for growing vegetables and produce as a part of a grant for helping minorities learn farming and produce growing methods, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Anybody out in the public wants to make comments on eight, nine, or 10? I see we have some of our friends from Grow Cedar Valley, anything at all? I'm not forcing you to, if you don't want to get up, I mean, we've seen you, but, okay. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Childs?
I'd like to thank Ruby for this project. She did let me know on the phone that the small greenhouse structures are something she would like to see across the city to increase the amount of organic farming, farming happening in our city, and I think that's a very positive step forward. So please feel free to reach out to her, she told me to let you know if you have a neighborhood association that would like to use this in your neighborhood, but I'm very happy to see this.
Any other council questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Amos.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, I just wanted to, I wanted to echo what Councilman Childs is saying. Ms. Abibi got ahold of me, it's a little over a year ago, and told me about this project, and I firmly believe that it is something that will benefit our community in its entirety, all of our wards. So kudos to her for bringing this forward, and I would appreciate the council's support on this.
Thank you, sir. All right, hearing nobody else.[1778.11]